Yeah. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Belgrade Planning Board Meeting of November 7th, 2024. It is 6:02 and we're gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with a roll call. Tonight in the meeting, we have Mrs. Penny Morrell, and we have Mr. Nick Siccaro, and we have Mr. Craig Alexander, myself, Seville Anguette, and we have Mr. Hanson Smousen, who's our CEO, and be as soon, we have Mr. George Seal, and Mr. Lawrence Kestner, and the third person will be Mr. Phil Saucier. So that said, we have a person in the audience tonight.
Good evening. I'm Mary Dennison. I'm the attorney for Mr. Kestner.
Excellent. So that said, we're gonna roll with business here, and the first part of the agenda tonight is the soon conversation with our town attorney on accessory structures. So maybe what I should do is give the floor to Mr. Saucier.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, guys. Good to see everyone virtually. And hi, Mary, in the audience.
Hi, Paul.
Well, I sort of as a preface, I've been asked to come sort of briefly review accessory structures in light of a case called Stiff versus the Town of Belgrade. And I just want to preface with the fact that I'm not going to get into the details particularly about that particular matter. I consider it an ongoing matter. So we obviously have a law court decision here, but the parties are still determining what to do, what they'd like to, how they'd like to present to the town on that particular case. I'm not going to talk about that case, but what I'll talk generally is about what the law court said and how we can start to think about it as we, as we apply it. I will say I'm not going to have all the answers for you today because we have this case where, based on your questions, I think you're, you're sort of puzzling over it a bit. I can honestly say it, we're puzzling over it. I know that the CEO community, because I've had other CEOs reach out to me in other towns as they try to think about this in their own communities, are still trying to think about it. So we'll, I think we're all gonna have to learn together as we kind of move forward. And I do think there's a way to read that case as sort of being limited to the, sort of specifically to the, to the matter at hand in the stiff case. So I think there's a way to think about it more limitedly, in a more limited fashion, I'm sorry. I think ultimately, though, we may also need the DEP to eventually weigh in at some point as a general matter, because these are shoreland zoning provisions, and I think it's different, the outcome of that case is different than the way that the DEP and I think most municipalities have interpreted this issue of accessory structures in the shoreline zone. So I just preface by saying that because it is, we are sort of in a new area here, and we don't know all the answers. I have not seen it yet applied in any particular case. So in short, what, in that case, and I'm not, and again, I'm just gonna tell you what they, what was said in that case. Obviously, you guys know the facts more than most, but there was, it was an after-the-fact permit. I won't get into the, before that, but essentially, there was a, a structure that was built on a residential lot. There was already a residential dwelling unit on this lot. There was a new structure that was built that was, that was gonna be 20, originally, it was gonna be a garage and a playroom, and you, after the fact, they built it a little differently, as you know, so they came for an after-the-fact permit. And what they built was a two-story, 32 by 28-foot structure with three bedrooms, this according to the law court's description of it, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a laundry room, and a room that was labeled "the playroom" on a building sketch. The playroom included a sink and kitchen appliances, and there was a paved walkway between the pre-existing house and the new structure, and it was going to be, quote, "in addition to the single-family dwelling." The planning board approved that as an accessory structure, and after-the-fact permit, had some conditions of approval, and one of the conditions of approval was somewhat standard condition, quite frankly, in my perspective, when you have, when you have a sort of bunkhouse, if you will, or, or some house, you know, some rooms off, off from the main house, which was that you cannot use it for cooking, and no kitchen appliances, so that it would not be considered a dwelling unit, which a dwelling unit is defined as having cooking, cooking facilities, as well as restrooms and sleeping quarters. So there was a condition of approval, take out the, take out any kind of cooking, and it was a condition. The court, so there was obviously an appeal, and one of the issues on the appeal was whether this really was an accessory structure. And the court went through some analysis, and they came out with, by saying essentially, no, it was not an accessory structure. And one of the reasons why I sort of, if you kind of boil it down, is that the, the court found that this was not incidental or subordinate to the primary structure, which is the house. And I think it was a little fact-specific in that case, so I think that could be helpful in terms of how you think about other applications. So for example, the, the court found it was not accessory because it wasn't incidental in the sense that it was about the same size. So the court made a point of saying that, that it was about the same size as the house. So obviously, something the same size is not in, in the court's view, incidental or insubordinate, meaning minor or secondary. It also, the court made a point of saying it also had similar, similar internal facilities. So they both had three bedrooms, they both had two bathrooms, they both had communal living spaces, or space, they both had an area with sink, and quoted "an area where appliances could be added," although it's not clear that it was actually in this case, and they both had covered outdoor spaces. So the court really looked at how similar it was to the existing house. So both size and structure of it did determine if it really did meet this definition of an accessory structure, and found that it was not. The part that's a little bit hard to understand or to apply is that it's not clear from the court, or if the court is saying that you could never have an area on your lot that's not the house, but maybe has a few bedrooms. I don't think that's what the court was saying. But it, but there is some gray area, and there's some ambiguity, which is, I know why you're asking the question. And the reason why is because the court specifically sort of noted that even though the planning board noted that these are not two dwelling units as defined, that that didn't matter to the court. It didn't matter that the second unit was not a dwelling unit. It was really looking at, was it really incidental and secondary, using sort of looking at the space, I would look at it almost as the space requirements, the, the space uses, I should say. So that's where I would lead it. The other way to think about it, although it doesn't lead to, it leads to a very difficult result for many property owners, is to suggest that, okay, maybe it's, you, you know, anytime you have living quarters, it's really an extension of the principal use or principal structure. That's another way to read that case. You know, that the principal use in this case is residential, and it's an extension. The issue with that is under the ordinance in Chapter 1000, you would need to essentially have the same, you'd need to build a pride, the same minimum lot size for each principal structure or each principal use. And obviously, that would make most lots not feasible, it wouldn't be feasible to add a structure like that. So I think that's one way to read it. I don't currently read it that way. You know, as we, we'll, we may get more guidance from the courts as these work through the process. What I read it as, this case, and in fact, if you look at the final conclusion, that, in that case, that, that structure as built, is what it says, as built, does not meet the shoreline zoning definition of an accessory structure. And the condition posed by the planning board did not transform that structure into one meeting the definition, meaning the kitchen facility restriction. So I, I think one of the things, the, the general guidance I would say as of today is, when you're looking at, if you have applications before you for accessory structures as, as applied, you really would look to see, compare it to the size of the existing structure, but also, what is, what is it being used for internally? Like, the court went out of its way in the stiff case to say that there was the same number of bedrooms, same number of bathrooms, that there was, both had communal living spaces, essentially everything but for a kitchen. It would have been another house, if you want to boil it down. That's essentially what they're saying. So if, if, if it's something else, you know, a small, just bedroom facility by itself, a little, what we think of as a traditional bunkhouse or main bunkhouse, you know, that may certainly meet the definition of accessory structure, you know, factually. So you're just gonna want to be, one thing I would advise you is make some findings of fact to show how this is not really like another dwelling unit, if you will, or, or, or a similar principal type of structure. And, and, and just make sure you make those findings, because if there was a challenge, that's, I think that's what it would come down to again, using this case as precedent, it was sort of comparing the structures and to see if the new structure really was incidental and subordinate or not. So those are my initial thoughts. Again, it's a new world with this, and I know you're struggling with it. I think a lot of communities, especially in the shoreline zone, are struggling with it. So I think we're all learning together a little bit. Happy to take any questions.
George Seal.
Hi, George.
Hi, how are you this evening? Thanks much for attending. The, sorry, I'm at home. I blew out my knee. The, can we go back to a point you made early on? The, there are a lot of things about this court decision that I find incredibly confusing. Not so much to the specifics of the Jones application as its broader implications.
Right.
The, and one is, so what if we have two, two principal structures proposed in the shoreline zone on the same lot, if there's sufficient lot area, the setbacks can be met, the 20% unvegetated surface area is not exceeded? In other words, what does it matter if it's an accessory structure or not, as long as it's not a dwelling unit?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good point. And I think if, if minimum lot area is not an issue, and setbacks are not an issue, then it won't matter, right? Because if, if someone could, in other words, meet the standards by calling them both principal structures, except the residential, fine, right? The ordinance allows you, allows you to have more than one principal structure again, as long as you're meeting the minimum standards. So, you know, one, one thing you could do is, is in a finding, you could note that it meets the standards, you know, under either scenario, to kind of cover both bases, that, you know, if treated as a principal structure, it meets the standards, but we, but you may also find that it actually is an accessory structure in terms of its actual use and size and everything like that. So it, I think that's gonna be fact dependent. In other words, it's gonna depend on the application, it's gonna depend on the lot, the structure, on how you're gonna end up having to treat it.
Yeah.
Review it.
Um, okay. The, the other aspect of that, the accessory structure definition and the way the court interpreted that beyond incidental and submer, subordinate, they seem to add another criteria, and that is that it not be duplicative. And maybe this is what you're meant by, should we interpret that duplicative as, sorry about the dog barking, the, that it isn't just that, you know, the second structure has, provides a bathroom, and the original principal structure also provides a bathroom, but that, you know, the principal structure has two bathrooms, and what does the proposed second structure have one or two bathrooms, or that it's the number as well as, you know, the function? Because they use the term "function", duplicative function. And so, you know, that made me worry that, for example, a bunkhouse, which provides sleeping quarters, is duplicative with a, you know, the original camp or, or house, or whatever it is.
Yeah, I, and the court also cites their definition of accessory as something that must complement, not duplicate, which is another use of that word duplicative, but not duplicate the, the use of the principal structure. I think it's a fact-based determination. In other words, an example, if you have a real, if you have a bunkhouse with a couple of rooms, right? That's clearly not duplicating the house in the sense that the house has a living space, again, using what, using the court's description here. Living space, bathrooms, kitchen, right? You're not duplicating that. You're having, it's accessory to it. Again, I, this is new law, and so I don't know what the next case is gonna say, but as I read this, it would not prohibit, for example, a traditional bunkhouse with a couple of rooms or whatever, that is clearly incidental to the house itself.
So we look at the proposed structure in its entirety not function by function, you know, sleeping.
That's the way I would read it.
Yeah, okay.
I would read it, yeah.
Thank you.
Just one question before you go, Craig, please. So Mr. Seal, Mr. Saucier, Mr. Seal brought the concept of two structures in a lot that is acceptable, as the, it complies with the minimum size. So there's two structures there. What, what is, what is the conclusion on that? I missed it. Can we have the two structures?
Yes, I think you can, again, but it's gonna be fact-dependent. What I mean by fact-dependent is you're gonna look at what is being proposed it to be used for, right?
So both of them can have bathrooms, both of them can have kitchen, and both of them can have...
No, no, no. So, so what, what this court has said, the what you just described, under, under the stiff ruling, that would be considered two principal structures because they're duplicative in the sense that you could live in either one. They're essentially dwelling units. You know, you could kit, you could cook, you could, what, what you could still have, in my view, is, is a actual accessory structure, meaning that is not duplicating a house, maybe, you know, that doesn't have the same number of bathrooms, that doesn't have the same number of bedrooms, so it's something smaller. Yeah, the court makes a point of pointing out the living space and a kitchen facility, or a sink, which could have kitchen facilities in it. So if it didn't have that, for example, then I think there's an argument that that's different, and that's more, and that would meet the definition of accessory.
So, so, but I thought maybe I got this wrong. The stiff only have lot size for one principal structure only. They didn't have space for two, to two, double the minimum size.
Well, again, I'm not, I, I prefer us not get into that particular lot, because they may come back with an application before you, and I don't know what they're going to do. I haven't spoken to them. But let, we can talk about the theoretical, right? So say someone comes to you, you have a lot, you've got a camp on it, it's small, right? And so, and they want to have a bunkhouse. They would not be able to have, if they wanted to have an actual separate principal structure, as you're suggesting, they would have to meet the, the minimum lot standards for that second building as well.
Okay.
Right? That's what they would have to do.
If it was a principal dwelling unit, is what he's saying. If, if it was a second dwelling unit, I mean, kitchen, bathroom, sleeping.
Yeah.
Then you'd have, then you gotta have enough to have a big house.
Yeah. So that's what I was saying. If you have enough room for two principal structures, you can have both principal structures.
If, if you meet all the other requirements.
If you, yes, if you meet, if you have enough room, meaning the lot size and the other standards, yeah.
Okay, great. So I heard you correct it.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Craig has a question.
So I have a couple. First of all, that was connected to the principal structure. How would that be?
If it was connected.
If that same building was connected.
Yep.
Yeah. What's the answer there?
If it was connected, it would likely be an extension. I mean, again, you'd have to see how it was actually expansion of that principal structure. You'd have to see how the design really worked in that case, whether it's really a standalone or not.
They had square footage, so they had enough space, they were allowed to put it in. So if it was just connected.
It'd just be an addition.
It'd be an addition, and you'd have to meet the standards for addition, you know, lot coverage, that kind of thing.
Okay, so what if it was pre-existing?
If the original.
And they wanted to put a bathroom, and they wanted sleeping quarters, and the building's pre-existing.
So they built like a breezeway, you know?
No, no, separate.
No.
Pre-existing building.
Right, right. But to make it one, you'd have to.
No, no, I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
I'm talking about a pre-existing garage.
Okay.
Already there. They have plenty of space up above the garage, or they want to take one bay of the garage, and split it into two rooms, and make a bathroom, or they want to take the whole garage. I mean, it's a pre-existing building. The building's already there.
So, yeah, so you have a pre-existing, sounds like accessory structure, a garage, right? So that it would, in what you would look at if, if you were to add a bunk, if you were to essentially transform it into a bunkhouse, is, is, does it essentially duplicate the size of the house? In other words, to give you an example, you gotta, if you got the garage, and the house is, I mean, just using the stiff case, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, common living space, place with a sink and a kitchen, and you put all the same things, that kind of, if you can fit all that in your existing accessory structure, I think under the logic of this case, that would not be an accessory use at a minimum. The word "use" in, in structures kind of being used interchangeably throughout this, this opinion, and this, but you, you would, you would essentially turn it into another principal uses, the way I'm reading the stiff case. So you, you could add a couple of rooms, probably, right? Because that's less than the existing house.
Yeah, and one bathroom, because that's less than what's.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
What if it was a half-bath?
Better. Especially the smaller, especially the less you're creating what looks like to be existing house.
How you doing? Nick Siccaro, did they have, did they emphasize the uses of space more so than the size of the structure relative to the primary, or is it a combination of the two?
It was a combination. I just went back through and reread it, you know, in preparation for this meeting, and essentially, if you look at it, it's, the, the first part of the case talks about why it's not accessories, it's sort of two reasons. One was it was similar in physical size, like the actual square footage in that case. So the court was comparing that. And then what, what was actually it was being used for, meaning the number of rooms essentially. So the court stood out the fact that they had the same number of bedrooms, same number of bathrooms, both had a common living space, both had.
The accessory unit was, let's say, 50% smaller.
Right.
No kitchen, but similar bedrooms. Let's say it's a small camp, and they just, you know, it's a one-bed camp. You got a small little place, and then you want to do a one-bed, one-bath, and accessory, but it's 50% smaller. That's not like.
I think that would certainly help from a factual perspective on the, on the size.
Right.
Part of the analysis.
So either the size or uses of space is significant.
I would say and, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, and, and the one other sort of, not to confuse everyone, but, but this is the part that's a bit confusing, and George raised this, is so the court went through the structure analysis, right? The size of the structure, what's in the structure, and how that's similar. But then the court also did say, but there also are similar uses, and that both are essentially, quote, "houses," right? That's what the court said. Now, again, it didn't have, it didn't have kitchen facilities, so it doesn't meet the definition of a dwelling unit, which is part of the reason why it's confusing, right? Because dwelling, that's what we think of as houses. Right. But the court did make this use issue, so setting the structure issue, and then the use issue, it said these are similar uses, and that they're both structures, and they could duplicate the functions of the main building. Now, what I would say is, again, as that house was built, so as you're looking at applications, I think one thing you would look at is, does this really duplicate the functions of, of the, of the camp? I think in most bunkhouses, the answer's no, right? You don't, you have a separate living room in these bunkhouses, not always, at least. You don't have, you know, the same number of bedrooms, the same number of bathrooms, kitchen facilities. And I would just continue to, I would continue to point that part out, even there is a distinction there.
What if you have, and what if you have in the primary, you have three bedrooms, one bath, and then in the accessory, you had two bedrooms and a half-bath? That would be.
Right, but no kitchen facility, no living room, and accessory, right? That would certainly help in part of the analysis, defining those kinds of facts. You're differentiating it. That's what I would make sure you're doing, your finding.
Judgment. There's nothing definite. There's no, hey, it has to be, you know, 70% smaller, if it, it's just.
No, no. That's right. There is still some discretion here in determining, in determining it, yeah.
But the accessory structure has to be smaller than the principal.
Yeah, but I mean, small, about 10% smaller than, I mean, there's no number.
No, it's not. And I think, I think honestly, there, it's a combination of the size and structure and the use. In other words, I was thinking about it, right? And I try to think about these things practically. Sometimes people's barns are very large, right?
Right.
Which is, and they may even be taller than the house. I mean, obviously, we've seen barns that are taller than, or bigger than a house. To me alone, does not make it necessarily not accessory, right? It depends on what you're using it for. Maybe you've got longer vehicle, you know, some people park their motorhomes in these things now. So I think it's a combination, and the court looked at the combination. It was the size of it, and what it was actually, what was, what it was inside of it.
Sir, I have a question, if I may. This is maybe the view from 60,000 feet. It seems like the court's decision conflicts with, with itself. On one hand, it focuses, focused on a second principal structure, not a, an accessory structure. And then earlier in its findings, it focused heavily on the fact that the second structure was a addition to the original structure by virtue of, I think, by the walkway that goes from one to the other. Do I have that correct? Because, because they weren't very clear about this, but it seemed, they seemed to imply there wasn't enough, that there was too much, the footprint was too big of the two structures combined. But despite the fact that the existing structure was within 100 feet of the lake shore, and the new structure was more than 100 feet away, separated by 35, 40 feet. That is totally in contrast with the guidance from DEP on how we're supposed to divide up those footprint square footages based on the distance from the lake. So it, all that is very confusing, and in fact, doesn't seem to even be consistent with the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I'll, I'll address your, your question about extension or expansion. I'm not sure the court did find that here. You're right, that the court did find that they were connected. They sort of went out of their way to make, to make that point, right? When they were citing what was, what it was. It was, noted it was connected, I think, covered outdoor space, or there was, come to a connective, right? They made a point of saying that. But I, I think under the analysis section, it didn't, at least the way I read it, wasn't really part of the analysis. It was, it was really focused on the separate, you know, separate size of that structure and the use of that structure. So I didn't see that. But I, I hear you. I hear you about it. I mean, it is, it is a little bit hard to, it is a little confusing.
Yeah.
Case, yeah.
So that brings us back to my earlier question, because it seems like a few different things have been said. If we have an application where, for a second, new structure, not this scenario that Craig brought up of an existing structure being converted, but a, a new structure, and it, in essence, is going to be a second principal structure, the ordinance doesn't require, doesn't have a lot size requirement based on number of principal structures. It has, for residential, it's only related to residential dwelling units. Hence, the use of our, why we use the condition of approval that we did at the time. There, there's, maybe I'm missing something completely in the ordinance, but I don't see where having a second principal structure, if you have enough lot area for the dwelling units, matters one way or the other.
I think there is something, and I'm trying to find it. Excuse me. Yeah, okay. So in Section 15 Land Use Standards A, Minimum Lot. So in section fifteen, land use standards A, minimum lot standards. Five, and again, you're right that it talks about dwelling unit, but I'll, I'll just read that section, so fifteen A five. If more than one residential dwelling unit, or more than one principal governmental institutional, commercial, or industrial structure. Or use, and that's the, that's the issue, or use, or combination thereof. Is constructed or established within the shoreline zone as a single partial parcel, all dimensional requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling unit. Or principal structure or use. So the question is, and it is an interpretation question, I'm just reading it now, is would they be considered two, uh, uses, principal uses? I think, I think what it means is two. Different principal uses, right? I think that's what that means.
Yeah.
Um, and so you're right, actually, as it, as it. That divides it out, you, you can, uh, it, it talked about more than one residential dwelling unit would have to meet the additional standards, as that term is defined. And then in terms of the structures, it specifically says principal governmental institutional, commercial, or industrial structures. Would each have to meet it. So that is different, right? Yeah. Yeah.
So. Um. I feel, uh, there's a little shortcoming, I think, in the ordinance, which have for one thousand, which we've all adopted, because in that scenario of A five. If you did have two, shoreline zone goes back two hundred and fifty feet, so you would need three hundred and twenty feet of shorefront. To. Calculate out eighty thousand square feet. What's absent here is that placement of those structures should be in a way that if the lots were divided, they would be two conforming lots. I think that's something that maybe we should look at.
Yeah.
Local. As being a little bit, going a little bit further than the chapter one thousand. Um. This, this just does govern what's in that two hundred and fifty feet of, from the shoreline, not the total lot. So we don't want to overlook.
That's a good point, Hans, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I got two more questions, just.
Okay.
So when we are talking about a bunkhouse. We are talking about a structure that has only sleeping quarters, not plumbing.
Uh, most likely, and I say most, it, it won't have kitchen facilities, right? It won't have kitchen facilities, I'll put it to that way.
Yeah, but then, then you're saying that we can have a toilet there.
Well, I'll just tell you what the stiff case said, when you had. Two bathrooms, that was too much, right? Because the, because the other, because their main house also had two bathrooms.
But if the main house was one bathroom only, then, then what we do?
Then, yeah, then you likely cannot have a bathroom. I, I. Again, we're, these are fact-based, these are fact, fact-based analysis. In other words, when I say fact-based, what I mean is. You're gonna look at what's presented to you in the application.
Sure.
Everything is gonna be, and each of those applications are gonna be different, right? Because you're gonna have a different principal house, principal unit. You're gonna have a different proposal, and I think I could see a scenario where maybe a half bath. Would still be considered incidental in certain cases, but in other cases, they, it would not, because you only have. You know, rudimentary facilities, or you only have one bathroom in the other house.
I can see, yeah, I mean, a half bath, I can see, because, you know, you, you'd have to leave a bunkhouse to go into the main principal house to use the bathroom. I can, I can understand you not showering in there, or, you know, bathing in there, but just a, a sink. You know, a little half bath, so that you don't have to leave a bunkhouse to go to your principal, you know, to go there, you know, you know, wintertime, it's. A blizzard, you gotta go outside to, to use the bathroom, it's crazy.
Yep, I think, I think the key is, as you review the application, is the more it's sort of less of the regi- of the regular.
I'm talking about strictly when the principal structure, structure only has one bath.
Yeah, exactly, yep, yep.
So, and then the last question I have for you is, is the, the concept of footprint versus square footage. So when we're talking about a principal structure that maybe, uh, has a particular footprint. Uh, but then the square footage is double because, or triple because it's, uh, we don't have a triple here, we have only doubles. It's, uh, it's said, it's a, what can make triple if we have a good, a good basement? So the, the square footage multiplies. Even when the square footage, the, the footprint stays the same. So are we, in terms of size, do we have to consider the footprint or the square footage?
Well, the court in this case, uh, considered the square footage. That was, in fact, they made a point of saying that. Um, and, you know, I haven't dug into that app, that application, but they made a point of saying the app, the findings affect or the application. Uh, noted the footprint, and, but the court dropped a footnote and said, look, but at the end of the day, the square footage was actually more than that, cause it was a two-story structure that was finished. So I think you'd look at the square footage.
So a square footage means, uh, not only the, 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 the le- the, uh, earth level. Square, uh, footprint, but all of it, all the floors in it.
Yeah. I think the court basically was relying on floor area, not footprint at all.
Yeah.
If you work out the percentages.
Yeah, and so there's a way to measure that, and Hans can help, there's some time, you know, in terms of.
So everything is basically in a burbage, and there was no drawings, I found myself lost into it.
Yeah.
Make, to show a difference between them, so great.
Our whole ordinance goes on footprint, so how can we apply square footage legally?
You'll need to, I mean, you'll need to have the applicant, if someone's applying for accessory. That structure. You know, they're gonna have to show what the, they're gonna have to show that comparison in their application, they're gonna have to show you what the square footage is of the house, in my view.
Very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Could I ask for a question?
Oh my god, yes. No, no, go ahead.
Hi Phil, it's Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Oh. Could I ask you a question about, um, this whole sort of, how big can the bathroom be if it's a half bath or a full bath or something? Would you have any, um, leniency on that if the whole? Or, or a healthy portion of the reason for having, um, a bathroom in the bunkhouse was because the bunkhouse was a single level and there was an accessibility issue? Um.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we've got a special needs kid, or if we've got elderly parents or something like that, I think accessibility in some of these older camps. To retrofit is virtually impossible, and I think some of the, some of the proposals. Um, can be for bedrooms on one level, bathroom on one level, that is accessible, um, and I wonder if that. Can be factored into the planning board's discussion when they're looking at accessory structures.
I think that's a good question, I think that that's certainly something, if that's the case, as part of an application. Um, I think that that is a fact that should be noted in the, in the findings, because I, you know, i- it's not duplicating. Right? To get to the court's language, it's not duplicating it, it's actually, um, in that case, uh, making something that's not. You're not able to do so, it's making more accessible. Um, so no, I think that's a good fact, if that was the case, to add in.
Okay, thanks.
But again, as you know, Mary, we're, we're all still trying to interpret this case, it's, uh.
It's a head scratcher. I, I, I have some real issues with the fact that, that size and that, that, that structure and use. Got confused, because as we all know, when you guys look at non-conforming, when you look at the ordinance, and it talks about non-conforming lots. Non-conforming structures, non-conforming uses, three very distinct things. And yet, here, I think the court took structure and use and put in a blender, and I, and I was very confused by the, the outcome, so.
I mean, what, like, what if somebody lived in the principal structure year-round, but they used the bunkhouse for six weeks out of the year?
And it, there's just a, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot there, so. I think it's gonna keep people like Phil and I busy for a while, possibly.
It is, unfortunately, and I, and I don't wanna, and I know we're kinda, I don't wanna keep it going longer, but the, the other, the other part, Mary, and you probably picked up on it, and maybe the planning board members did too, I think, is a head scratcher, is. Is this, uh, sort of footnote, but also sort of this point of calling out former CEO saying you can have a, you can have a refrigerator.
You think that was just a snarky comment? I mean, I, I don't even weigh on that, I thought that the judge was getting a little beyond.
Yeah, cause it didn't, it, you know, obviously, there's a difference, cause the, the ordinance, I mean, the definition of dwelling unit, it says cooking facilities specifically, right? So, it shouldn't matter whether you have a refrigerator or not, but the, the court did make a point of saying, well, there's, it's that quote, major appliance. And, you know, you could have a, a refrigerator in your garage, well, I'm thinking to myself, I mean, I grew up in northern Maine, I have camps, everyone has a. You know, you, you have, you have, you have refrigerator in your garage, you, you know, people use it for hunting or for extra, whatever, there, that's, but it's not a kitchen. You know, so I was a little puzzled by that, and I would say that was specific to that case, and I don't, yeah, so I wouldn't see a problem with that. Personally.
Phil.
I also think we should call this the Jones case, not the stiff case, I feel bad for the poor neighbors that had the case named after them.
Those are the ones that brought it out.
That's true, the other ones, that brought it up, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
I'm still really confused on how people. That. I don't know, I'm confused how they can make a ruling on that, just based on two lawyers.
Is there any chance that this can be revised, rewritten, you know, clarified?
Not at this point, yeah, uh, it's.
Turned general, they may say.
Now, what can happen is that the town, within the confines of what the D E P tells you, and Phil will tell you the same thing, within the confines of what the D E P tells you, you can do in the shoreline zone. The town can revise its ordinance. To tighten it up, or loosen it up, or have a lot more definitions, or whatever, so that, so that going forward, maybe your ordinance reads a little differently. Than it did for this case, so maybe for the next application.
Stringent though.
And that's, but that's right, that's, I mean, you can sort of, you can work with what you can work with in terms of what you can do with your own ordinance, but. There's no, there's no body of. I mean, I suppose the legislature could rewrite some of the shoreline zoning law, but that's not, that's the only other way to sort of alter the outcome of the decision. So what we're looking at is the law of appeals. Not anymore.
Yeah, this is the final, this is our main Supreme Court. So the only other thing I'd say, and I agree, I agree with what Mary just said, is maybe there could be potentially some ordinance. Adjustments within the confines of chapter one thousand, you can't go sort of beyond that, maybe structural. But the other way is that this case, just like any other case, could end up being refined over time, but it would take, you know, additional appeals. So that's the way the courts work, right? It's starting to sizes, so this could be narrowed with, through a future case, you know, the, um. It's also, I, I think it's a little fact dependent on this, you know, as it ended, it said it's, you know, as this particular structure was built. So I, I don't think it means that you can never have bunkhouses, at least I'm not reading it that way. So it's gonna be how you interpret it and how other planning boards interpret it over time, that it'll, we'll see how it grow, you know, see how it comes out.
Sarah, question, if I may, um, Phil, I, I'm really struggling with how to figure out how to go forward from this point on, I mean, I think. In the short term, we probably can muddle along with what you've told us tonight, even, um. But in the lo- in the longer term, longer term being in the next year, um. Maybe waiting until D E P addresses this issue more broadly at the legislature or whatever, um. I know what's gonna happen, if we just are left with what we have, information you've given us tonight, we will be all over the map with our decision-making. It will be so inconsistent, it'll be, uh, put the town at great liability. And, you know, so my preference would be to do, for the town, to not wait. But to, um, come up with a more stringent definition of accessory, uh, structure. Incorporating some of these, uh, you know, like size, uh, and, and, um. You know, you can't have two, more than two out of three functions, or whatever it's gonna be, it's gonna be arbitrary, of course. Uh, because the existing definition of accessory structure couldn't be more vague for laypeople like ourselves to interpret. And, um, and this isn't, you know, this refinement by the court, um, is. Equally as vague. Uh, the size being the only thing that really I can hang a hat, my hat on, um, and so. Do you think that's in a reasonable approach to, for us to try to get a, a refined definition of, um. I mean, obviously, you'll be reviewing it, D E P would be reviewing it, um, uh, of accessory structure, and also clarify that. Um. Either one way or the other, that, uh. A second principal structure requires, um, more lot area than a single principal structure, just like dwelling units. Um. Because that's also. Open to interpretation, um, and, um. And would lead to inconsistent decision-making on our part, and probably other towns' parts too.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it would be worth looking at the definition, um, again, you'll have to work with D E P, cause it's shoreline zone, so maybe we. Would work, start that process sooner rather than later, you know, if you're shooting for your town meeting. Um, and to reach out to the local, um, shoreline zoning coordinator. And, and to start to think about what that language could look like. I mean, what I would say is, uh. And I know Hans knows this too, that D E P really likes to hew as close to the chapter one thousand language as possible. I've found that to be more and more of the case. Um, but given, given this case, and maybe some other cases, they may be willing to kinda, to be more flexible.
Yeah, well, and we've had conversations, Hans, including, and as well as we've had email exchanges with, uh, Cole and Clark, um. I don't know if D E P is gonna do anything, um, leaving the rest of us in a lurch. And, you know, they're not the ones that would ha- uh, had to pay for you to go to court to defend the town of Belgrade.
Right.
Um, and so, um, the taxpayers of the town of Belgrade did, so. Um, you know, they don't really have as much skin in the game, you might say.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I think, so I think the short answer is yes, I think you could look at it, let's see what we, you could see what you could do within the confines of. Chapter one thousand, ultimately, D P has to approve, right, any amendment to the shoreline zone, so we, we would have to have them on board. Um, I, I, I wouldn't be. Too prescriptive, I know that goes against what you're saying, George, but I do think that there's, there's some, there's some utility in having some flexibility. Based on the application, every application is different, right? And so sometimes too much specificity is not helpful, quite frankly. Um, because there's different cir- circumstances, houses are different sizes, you know, all the different things. Um, but maybe a little bit more, right? So maybe, maybe a little bit more guidance, if we get, if D P is okay with that. So I'd be happy to review or help you guys think about that.
Yeah.
For the next process.
Sarah, I would suggest that this would be, uh, uh, an agenda item at our next meeting this month. So that we can discuss what we've learned here tonight, and. Uh, discuss what our next steps are gonna be, because the clock's ticking, if we're gonna get anything to town meeting next March, we have to have something to the select board the first week of January.
Go ahead.
And, uh, or, you know, or we just bumble along.
Okay, um, Ms. Maral, thank you. Um. Was this decision made by the justice, um, specific to. An ordinance section, sub-section? Or was this just out of the blue? Is what I'm, seem to be hearing here at the time, that this.
No, no, I would, I wouldn't say it's out of the blue, the, the court was interpreting your ordinance provisions. And it was their, you know, their decision, and they were, they were citing to the shoreline zoning provisions, specifically. Uh, definition of accessory structure or use amongst some other provisions.
But it isn't, it isn't well-written, so that they were interpreting, am I, is that correct?
Well, I'm never gonna be someone who says the law court doesn't have a well-written decision, someone else, um, so I'm not, I'm not saying that. Um, what I am saying is that it, it, it did change a lot of ours, uh, reading of, uh, uh, how you'd read these ordinances. It did leave some gray areas for us to continue to, to work our way through. Um, I would use the word head scratcher a bit, as Mary did, I, I, I'll go that far, it was a little bit of a head scratcher, but. I wouldn't say it was out of the blue now, it was, it was, you know, it was a reasoned decision, citing to case law and to the statute, and it, the, the court ultimately, our, our main law court, has the. Authority to ultimately decide questions of law, and that's what they did.
When it wasn't explicitly written. She's interpreting it, because it isn't expressly written.
That it says in, in the decision, when, when a term is not well-defined, they look to the dictionary. You look in a decision, they have this, you know, from, right, that's where they quoted, then they go from there, that's, that's.
There, and they, they applied the, they applied the law and the dictionary definitions to the, to this case, yeah.
I'd almost, I'm almost going to a rabbit hole, because part of the thing that really takes me. Uh, is that I'm very black and white, and I'm very mathematical oriented. And when a decision says that and and or are the same thing. It really, really melt my head, because, yeah, this laws are like a theorem, a mathematical theory. You have this, you have this, you can go this, you know, you mismatch and you go in one direction, but when. You know, you mismatch and you go one direction, but when and or in a theorem cannot be the same thing, it's not the same thing. You either, you didn't mix them together or you are separating uh, to make a decision. Now, one last question for you, Mr. Sasha, can you, do you recommend that we place a moratorium? On, on, on this process?
Or, Bill, I had a question, would you recommend that we use our conditions of approval to better iterate? The intentions of the ordinance and make clarity as to the approval?
Yeah, in what way, Hans, like you said.
Well, rather than having a moratorium to move forward, when we have accessory structures that wanna be converted into a detached bedroom. Or a bunkhouse that we use our conditions of approval. As a way to better iterate the ordinance and, and what it is we're trying to. Uh, hold the applicant, the restrictions that we want to put on the applicant.
I think that that could be helpful, you know, based on the application, um. If you mean by condition of approval, I think it's also, it's condition of approval, but it's also the approval itself, right, you're looking at what they're asking for. And, you know, is it, is it accessory as we just went through? Um, and then you could put some conditions of approval like you did last time, just be, be specific, but like court uh. A- also suggested there could be some enforcement, author uh, enforce, it could be difficult to enforce certain conditions, I mean, that's always the case, so that was. It's a little bit, um, but. Yes, you, you could use, you could use conditions of approval, but I, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit to figure out what you mean by that, because. The structure is the structure, in other words, if you have a two-bedroom bunkhouse above an existing garage. Maybe what you're saying is, and you can't then further add, add cooking facilities here, that kind of thing, is that what you mean, Hans?
Yeah, yeah, just dispel, you know, all the limiting factors, it could um. You know, bunkhouse by nature is one room, it's not several rooms, it does not have plumbing. Um, because in the state's subsurface wastewater definitions, a room, a sleeping room with plumbing is a detached bedroom. You know, if it's a separate building, it's a bedroom or a detached bedroom.
I see, so yeah, you, I mean, you could decide that to have a condition of approval, there's no plumbing. It's, I mean, again, it's up to the board, I don't, I think each, each application is different, I'm not sure that you'd wanna have a hard and fast rule, I mean, it sounds like some of you might, but. It does seem to like that each application is a little bit different, and you're gonna weigh, weigh the factors based on the facts that are presented to you.
Well, my conversation with D P, they're kind of deferring to the subsurface wastewater definitions, because there is no definition for bunkhouse. So, there's a flat here and it says bunkhouse is accessory building. With no plumbing. Intended as temporary sleeping accommodations, so.
Uh, tha- that's something you may wanna think about in terms of your idea of amending the ordinance at some point.
Tighten up our definitions.
Yeah, you could be very clear about that.
Phil, is it, you're understanding that if you're from a town to have a moratorium on any particular segment of an ordinance, they have to go through. The process for a special town meeting to do that?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah, that, i- it's an ordinance, it's moratorium has to be adopted by town meeting. Um, and so it would be of general applicability, you know, likely, it sounds like what you're talking about is a. Moratorium on accessory structures, so it's pretty broad, that's pretty broad. You know, that, that you may sweep, you may sweep in more than you would think. So if you're, if you are gonna go down that route and you bring it to a special town meeting, you wanna be very specific on what you're talking about.
Well, and the problem with a moratorium, as we're disc- discussing now, for me at least, is. You still haven't a good definition of accessory structure. Um, you know, it says, it's still the same vague, uh, unclear definition that we have today. Both in our ordinance and in chapter one thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, so it, it'll be still open to all kinds of interpretation over time.
Yep, so what I would say in the interim is take each application on its face, you know. Can, you know, make sure, you know, determine whether it's similar in size, similar in use as the existing structure, determine if it really is extra, accessory or not. And that's gonna be each, each fact dependent.
Try to get a sense of. What kind of timeframe we're on in terms of possibly amending the ordinance. Phil, I, I, I know you didn't wanna talk about the specifics of the stiff case, but do you have any sense of, since the court? Remanded it back to Superior Court, to Board of Appeals, and then back to us, do you have any sense of? How long that's gonna take, is that gonna take three months, is it gonna take a year or?
Yeah, good question, it's, it's a little bit of a procedural, it's a little bit of a strange procedural um, issue, and I'll just talk briefly about what the court said in this case. Instead of just vacating the decision, it, it remanded back to the Superior Court. With instructions to then have that court remand it back to the, to the Board of Appeals, within instructions to then remand it to the Planning Board. Um, and so, I. I've spoken to all three attorneys, I think we all agree, I wanna speak for all of them, that it, we just need to follow that process, it's, it's essentially an administrative process. The, the, the decision is what it is, but the last time we checked, and I just haven't checked to be honest with you recently, but we can check again, is that. For, for what had happened, is there actually the law court has to send its mandate down to the Superior Court, and I understand that hadn't happened yet, but it's been a. Few weeks, so I haven't checked, and then the court, it would, then the sort of dominoes would then fall. So, you know, we would just have a quick meeting, a Board of Appeals, who had their own attorney, Jim Kets, because very quick, just to say, thank you, we got it, remaining at the Planning Board. Back to the Planning Board, and then the parties are gonna determine what they wanna do, and that's the part I don't wanna get into, whether they reapply, whether they, what they wanna do. But then, your decision has been vacated regardless, this is just a procedural step that needs to taken, yeah.
Right, right, okay.
There'll be more on that, there'll be more on that in the future.
Uh, this might be a stupid question, right, but because this, the, the reading of this is so vague, right, and it's left up to our interpretation. And this application that we're not talking about was deemed um, to meet the ordinance by the Planning Board, by the Board of Appeals. Also by the Supreme uh, uh, Superior Court.
Yeah.
Would, would it be, would it, would, uh, would it be crazy if? Somebody came before us and we're, we're trying to interpret whether or not this meets the definition, if we were to invite the neighbors of. Where said houses could be proposed, and if they didn't have a problem with. It's because ultimately we're trying to avoid further litigation, but if the neighbors came in, because we're in, they were in court because of the neighbors having an issue with. Said building, right, so if the neighbors came in and said, we have no problem with this structure as proposed in these plans. Then would we feel more confident moving forward and getting approval, because those, the neighbors of the application are okay with the. Proposed, like we do, you know, in commercial, we invite the neighbors.
Yeah.
Could we then approve?
Well, I would, yeah, I, I definitely understand what you're saying, I, I mean, I think it, what, if, if. You know, what the neighbors say or any about or any person of interest has to say should be taken into consideration by the Planning Board, that's why you send notices out. So, you know, what I would say is the neighbors do get notices, they can come or not come, it's up to them, to your meetings. Um, express anything they want, you know, if they, if they disagree and they make an argument that, that you think is valid. That this, you know, in, in using this example, that it's a primary use and per, primary structure, then yeah, take that into consideration. But I wouldn't just say, just give neighbor sign off, I wouldn't say it that way, what I would say is that, that you, you know, give the neighbors the. Notice you do, they can come and they can testify one way or the other, and, and you can, you can weigh that, you can weigh that as part of your decision.
Right, I'm not saying we would disapprove it because of the neighbors, but if they approved, that, that would, uh, uh, give us more confidence in approving.
I see, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, yeah, you would wait, you would, you would weigh what they're saying as part of your decision-making process.
To, well, you did it for that guy, how come you're not doing it for me?
Oh, it's, it's so vague, it's up to.
Yeah, and people, you know, so what I would say is, and I know, it doesn't. Each application is different.
Phil, I'm, I'm very black and white on this kind of things when I'm uh, 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 moving an application through. And right now we're still in a vague, so. Uh, I, I want a strict directions, should we put a moratorium? And the, the present application is in the dock, so we have to deal with it anyways, they're, they, it gets before the time of the moratorium coming in. And that will give us time to uh, wrap up this application, put the next ones on hold, on stop. So we have a, a more concrete definition of what will be the guidelines for this uh, new rule. And then having to the voters in, in March and go forward, I, I myself, I'm very excited and uh, inspired by what you declared today. I have a picture, I have, I have a path forward in my mind, but we have to write it down and we have to talk about it ourselves. And we need, we need a bubble, uh, space to be able to do that.
So I, what I would say about moratoriums, I would not do a moratorium with a, you need to have town meeting approval, so without town meeting approval, I would not recommend the planning board just stop. Stop reviewing applications that come before you. Um, because I do not have, think you have the authority to do that, in my view. So you have to continue to process applications as you receive them, there's a timeframe typically in the ordinance, so if you don't meet the timeframe, um, someone could still appeal anyway. So, uh, no, you know, you could propose a, a moratorium um, up through the board, select board. Would have to go up to the select board, the select board would have to agree to put it on a social town meeting ballot, so you can do that, and, and that's up to the town from a policy perspective, whether you wanna do that. Um, but I would not recommend the planning board doing that on their own. So, but other, but other than that, I agree with you that you could continue to look at the ordinance, I, I like what you're saying in terms of taking a look and see if there's some amendments that you could. You could do here in the interim, and you could start that sooner rather than later. Um, so.
Sarah, could we start that discussion at the next meeting and ensure there's an agenda item where we set aside? Um, a good half hour to three quarters of an hour for uh, deciding our path forward with respect to either. Well, more likely uh, possible ordinance changes.
Okay, so, yeah, we should do that, now, uh, one last question, Phil, uh, th- these are border ideas, I like it a lot. It, because it's not part of our ordinance and the process of application, is it still something that we can layer over? Because of the um, flexibility of this court decision, is that something that. Uh, arbitrarily, we can. Uh, establish as part of the uh, pu- approval process.
The, the butter?
The butter.
Butter, butter input is what you're asking, can you, can you put that in the ordinance that that's part of the?
No, no, it's, no, I don't think it's part of this ordinance, and a part of the application process. And so what I'm trying to be is fair to the, to applicants, so you come in and say, well, the audience doesn't say any of our, all that. About inviting a board or whatnot, and we're trying to place that in. So then we have more assurance that we're going in the right direction and not facing liability.
Most, most ordinances, I don't wanna step on each other's fellow, go for it, most.
Go ahead.
If there's a zoning application in front of a planning board.
Yeah.
At least when I was on the planning board, read Phil for five years, we had to give notice to a butters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so the first meeting would be to see if the application was complete, that's where that would strip. And the second meeting, you've given notice to a butters and they have a chance to show up, read the application.
We do that in commercial development organs, but.
But you could bake that into your shoreline zoning ordinance, absolutely.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Even when it's not in, you know, we are, I understand that, done that before.
I think they only do it in commercial.
Yeah, you can absolutely propose to add that in, sure.
Okay, so, but what I'm trying to say is that it's not part of our routine. So just in order to protect ourselves during this session between now and March, can we add it on without having legal repercussions?
It's not an ordinance, I was just suggesting that so that we're more comfortable with approving.
I understand, but, so it will be, would, I guess, would it be legal or okay for us arbitrarily set to do that? Just in order so we can, we can have a bridge till ma- March.
You could certainly send a notices, you know, there's nothing that, that's just extra notice from your meetings, you already have to have notice of your meetings. Public notice somehow, you could send direct notice, and then you could form, uh, the, there's no reason you couldn't send it to everyone in town if you wanted to today. And then, but you can do that, and then, but maybe you wanna formalize it, as Mary said, at some point into your, into the ordinance, so there's a process. And it's, you know, but there's nothing that would prevent you from sending notice, in my view.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, so I think I'm, I'm delighted, thank you for this meeting.
All right, thank you for having me.
So the thing with um, the public notice and all that. Does he go?
No, no, he's there.
No, I, I stayed.
So, I mean, we can't base up this decision because somebody doesn't want somebody to do something.
No, I agree.
Able to, to do it.
Yeah.
You know, even though the stiff or whoever doesn't want them to do it.
Yeah.
Their voice can't be louder than.
Yeah, I understand.
So, I mean, just because everybody's complains and about something.
True.
So, if we was to go by the butters all the time, then a lot of stuff wouldn't get done. And they don't pay the taxes, and they don't, we're taking away from the rights of the taxpayer. So that's very sketchy, and I'm not very on board with that.
No, I wanna make it clear what I said earlier, which is that the butter should have no say, so should have no veto whatsoever. What, what you do get as part of a public process, however, is that people get to speak. Right, so you can get, people can come to your meetings, they can give their opinions about it, they're allowed to do that. And then the board weighs that testimony, just like it weighs all the other evidence in front of it, and that's what you do in a normal course, that is not changing your process. I agree, I agree with the last speaker that you should not give sort of. You, 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 your, your duty is.
Screamed, so if they all come and they, and they all scream, and we go ahead and, and. Okay, the application, then when they go to court, they've got all these people that said, well, we told them.
Yeah, no, they, they, they would never veto it, I'm talking more if we're, if we're approving something that's on the, on the bigger side. That's close to the, you know, principal structure, and the, and the neighbors saying, we have no problem with it, and then we.
Right.
You know, that's what I'm, I'm not talking about, you know, something small that's clearly meets the ordinance, and they come in, they should, no, we don't want that, well, it doesn't matter, it meets order. I'm talking about in this, in a, in a case where it's something substantial, and we're really on that line, and, and the neighbors don't care, then okay, it goes. You know, because then we're not worried about future.
So what, what I'm hearing is that at the end of the day, we can add that layer of information into the application from their borders. But the board has us.
I mean, we can do it when we want to, we don't have to require, just if we want to, you know.
Yeah, what I was, what I was understanding, the chair was saying, is that you wanted to just provide notice of the meeting, you wanna make sure that notice of the meeting was provided. So people have the opportunity to come and, if they wanted to present, yeah.
Come and say they have no problem with it, but then Joe Blow, the cousin, comes and says, well, I wasn't invited, and I have, you know.
Yeah, at the end of the day, yeah, I understand, but at the end of the day, is, is a courtesy from the planning board to their butters. And I, I'll tell you something, Phil, I've never seen a border show up here to a meeting. So, so it's, it's in favor of the board anyways, i- if even, even if they show up. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good faith on the side of the board, and did, if this ever get litigated eventually, that's the way I see it.
Um, I will say, we've had a better show up before on applications. And they're like, well, no one ever said anything to me, well, well, it's not up to them.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
And they, they want colors and everything else, and say, no, that's not what's happening in Belgrade, man.
Yeah, I understand.
We, you pay your taxes, you have these rights to do what you can do.
Yeah.
This is, decision was very sketchy to me.
Right.
Very sketchy.
So now, do, do we have additional questions for Mr. Sasha?
Thank you, Phil.
All right, have a good evening, thanks.
Thank you very much, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, so now we can keep talking, want to, they just don't wanna keep holding us on. So I, I, I hear you. I'm not sure, but I wanted to let him go. So, um.
Sarah, do you need uh, me for a quorum for Mr. Kestner's uh, application?
No, I think we are good.
Okay, cuz I, I was at the last meeting, of course, it's just as a practical matter, um. The uh, obviously I can't sign the permit uh, tonight, since I'm not physically there.
We, we have a forum, we should be all right.
Well, then I'll sign off then, thank you.
Yeah, sure, I appreciate you.
And we're gonna take up this subject at our next meeting again, right, okay, very good.
Are you okay?
I stopped.
No, he just, he just, he doesn't even know, I don't think he fall. He just was standing up and then the knee, all of a sudden the knee. He just was standing up and then the knee, all of a sudden the knee give it.
All right, so.
So, um.
I apologize. I, I knew I knew you, but I'm looking at her thinking, I know this lady. It didn't register at first, but hi, nice to see you.
No need to apologize. I, I, there are a lot of rooms I'm looking through and go, I know some people here and I'm not allowed to say that. I know some people here and so, you know, hi.
So, um.
Anyway, I don't want Craig to miss anything, but, um, moving on to the Kestner's application.
Sure.
I'm happy to, first let me introduce, some of you know me, some of you don't. So, um, I'm an attorney in Winter and, um, I live in Reedfield. I was on the Reedfield Planning Board for five years and on the Board of Appeals for three years. And I represent applicants in this kind of situation and I also represent a bunch of towns. Um, I'm the lawyer for Smithfield, Fayette, Randolph, Farmingdale, a few, a bunch of others. Um, so I've been on, I've been on your side of the table and I've been on the other side of the table, um, in case you needed to know sort of where I was coming from. Um, and, um, Mr. Kestner contacted me to represent him because he's out of state. He's here by Zoom and he can certainly answer any questions that you have on his application. I know that you already have looked at it once. We've made a slight tweak because we think that there was an error in the architect's plans in the past because they put in a kitchen and there's no kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have read the stiff decision, which I call the Jones decision. Um, uh, over and over and over. So I know what's going on there and I'm happy to go through Mr. Kestner's application with you and show you where I think it is absolutely distinguishable from the facts of this case. I think that this is a nineteen seventy-five garage that they need to convert into extra space. They're not adding any bedrooms to the property. Taking one out of the camp, putting one into the garage. There are elderly parents of concern here. Um, there is also, um, some grandchildren. We need some space for them to be children and aren't doing all right in the main camp. Um, so I'm happy to walk through that with you, but I, I don't want to direct the process for you. So however you normally do your analysis.
We are, we actually, what we do is we have the applicant or where is representing the applicant speak first.
All right.
So walk, walk us through it.
Sure. So the, um, both structures on this property, which is a non-conforming shorefront property, uh, were built around nineteen seventy-five, way before the ordinance. One is a cottage and one is a garage. And you probably saw the, the photos that were submitted with the application when you first got it. Um, the house has, uh, currently five bedrooms, kind of crammed in, but five bedrooms. Um, and what they're proposing to do is take out one of those bedrooms to make it an upstairs bath, half bath actually. Because there's no bathroom upstairs and the stairs are very steep. Um, and have a bedroom in the garage and a bath in the garage and a play area in the garage. Um, the house is twenty-four square feet. You don't know the exact footprint, but it's twenty, it's twenty-four hundred, excuse me, I'm reading along the number here, twenty-four hundred square feet. The garage is eight hundred and forty square feet, thirty-five percent the size of that. So significantly smaller, in my opinion, that it means it's incidental and accessory, but that's my opinion, reading that case. Um, it's, um, there's only one dwelling unit allowed on this size lot in Belgrade. And we're absolutely aware of that. We're not trying to build a dwelling unit here. We just want to have, um, bedroom, a bath and a play area. We're not duplicating all of the functions that are in the main camp. There's no kitchen, there's no dishwasher. There's no refrigerator, there's no oven, all that sort of stuff. You couldn't, you couldn't just live in the garage. It's not habitable space as we're proposing to retrofit it. Um, the, the original garage was designed as an accessory structure. And I think that's where in the stiff case, you had something kind of different happen. The original design came in after the fact, looking like a dwelling unit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, that's a little different, I think, than what we have here. We have an existing structure, not a brand new one. And we're not putting in, you know, a big fancy kitchen, um. It's definitely not in addition to the house. We're not changing the lot coverage at all. Not one bit of the outside of any structure is going to change. And we're not changing the impervious surface. We're sensitive to that because when you're that close to the lake, you've really got to be conscious of your runoff. So there's going to be no increase in any of the impervious surface on the lot. It's all interior changes. Um, we're not, we're not duplicating the existing house. We are duplicating, I guess, part of the use of part of the existing house. As we're going to have a place to sleep and, and a bathroom. But to that extent, I still.
Well, we were talking about four rooms versus one room.
Right. Well, two, and there's, there's more than, there's, there's, there's a bath, a bedroom, a little sort of office space and a playroom. So there are multiple rooms in this garage, but in terms of what those rooms are used for, we're not duplicating what the house is at all. Um, and I think if, I'm going to ask Mr. Kestner if he wants to add anything to this in terms of, you know, Phil talked about use and intent, and I think Mr. Kestner can tell you exactly what his family's intent is in with this space and who'll be using it if you want to hear that.
Before, before he, he takes over, can you summarize for me again? The principal structure, how many bedrooms does it have?
It, it currently has five. We're going to reduce that to four.
Okay. And how many bathrooms that principal structure has?
It currently has one. We're increasing that to one and a half.
One, it, we, it current, it currently has two and we're increasing that to two and a half.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay.
Both, both bathrooms are on the first level.
Okay.
Okay, first floor. And then the garage, how many bedrooms went out there in the garage?
One.
One. How many baths?
One.
Okay. Then, uh, the extra rooms in the garage, uh, how many are those?
There was a small sort of office space, like we call it a library, where, where somebody can work while they're, they're visiting in the summer and have, you know, the internet hooked up and private quiet space to get some work done. Um, and then.
Do we have the same thing in the principal structure? A library?
No, no.
No, no.
Okay, and?
And then there's a sort of playroom for the kids, just an open space.
And the playroom is not, there's no playroom in the main.
There's no playroom, which is half of it.
Okay, we, we're clear. These are aspects for me, we're clear. We're clear in the, out of the, uh, situation with us this. So, uh, uh, Mr. Lawrence, you have the, the, uh, mic. Your turn.
My turn.
Yeah, your turn.
Okay, well, I think, um, I think that, uh, Mary said, uh, more or less what I need to say, but I can explain our family situation, which probably isn't unusual. We make, we live in Bethesda, Maryland. Um, we've, we've been living, um, on Long Pond for eighteen years in the summers in one camp and then another one as our family grew, just about sixty, seventy yards away from the, uh, the, the camp that we just purchased. Um, we intend to use it summer, some of the fall, some of the spring. It's not going to be a year-round house. It is currently uninsulated. Um, and our family is growing. We have friends, we have visitors. Uh, and we would, um, like to have a little more room for them to use the structures, um, again, with different uses in the existing garage. The existing garage, as far as I can tell, has been sitting there unused for fifty-plus years. Uh, and, and I think, you know, we, I think it's probably a good idea as, as policy to have a building that's used rather than one that's not. So, um, that's, that's what we'd like to do. It's really no more complicated than that. This is eight hundred and forty feet of space that, uh, could go to good use and, and currently isn't. And it, it, it meets all of the other requirements as far as I can tell.
Okay, thank you. Now, uh, any comments on the board? Any?
I'm good.
You're good? Nick?
I'm good.
So we, I think, uh, uh, we deemed the application completely in that sense and, uh, I, I was ready to, uh, do the findings of fact and conclusion of law. So ju- just to quickly review, then this is more for the whole. Um, we, we're talking about a, uh, application that has a principal structure of twenty-four hundred square feet and has, eventually is going to end up with four bedrooms and two and a half bathrooms, no extra space. Then the accessory structure unit is a garage, is a, is a person, personally insisting garage of eight hundred and forty square feet. And it's going to have one bedroom and one bathroom and two extra rooms, one office, library and a playroom. And, uh, so this is in, uh, line and, um, conformance, I would say, well, our lawyer just, uh, uh, mentioned to us that there's no duplication of, uh, space or use.
Yeah, I just want to make a little correct, um, it's got one half bath.
One half bath? Okay, the, 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 uh, so not two and a half, we have one half bath.
And, and the accessory.
And the accessory.
No, it's a, it's a full.
It's a full bath.
It's a full bath.
It says right there on the print, half bath.
There, there's a half bath going in the upstairs of the existing structure, the existing house. That's, so this application in the summary, they, that, that was submitted to you, um.
So what am I looking at here?
They talk a little bit about, that's the proposal, if I can look at that. That's the existing house. This is, in the house, they're going to have a little space with a, with a half bathroom on the second floor. There's no second floor in the garage. Um, so first of all, this is, this is, that's the garage for playing with that bath. So sorry, that was confusing. Um, the house is having some work done too, and I think that's why that was, um, but. The, um, it's, 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 it is a, it is a full bath. I want to.
Okay, so, so. Okay, let me review this again. So the principal structure in terms of bath is going to end up with two and a half bath.
Yes.
Okay, and then the garage will be one full bath.
Very good.
Okay, great. So, so, um, um, and this is my terms. With what Mr. Sausure described, we are in.
Yeah.
All right. So let's, let's go to the findings of fact and conclusion of law. So, um, Mr. Kestner, this is going to take about ten, fifteen minutes. Just bear with us. It's a boring process. You sit back and enjoy the ride.
I will.
All right. So, uh, findings of fact and, uh, conclusion of law. The applicants on, they applied of the shoreline permit for interior building out of an existing twenty-eight by thirty-eight garage for u- uh, for use as a seasonal guest cottage. The application was presented to the planning board on October seventeenth, November seventh and the twenty-first. We're wrapping it up today.
Put a line through that one.
Well, we'll do that.
I put it on there just in case.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to correct you, uh, Madam Chairman, um.
Sure.
The, I think I heard you say twenty-eight by thirty-eight. It's twenty-eight by thirty.
Thank you.
Just want to make sure.
I appreciate that. Twenty-eight by thirty, all right? Having a long day. So, so, uh, the findings of fact and conclusions of law were developed in conjunction with consideration of the permanent, the permanent application. Okay, we're going to go to the conclusions law. I'm going to need my room, my room this year.
Also, also, I don't know if you want to know, they're putting in a new septic system, right? They're expanding, yeah, that's great.
All right.
I thought you said there weren't, wasn't going to be any, uh, change in, it was just inside the building. It is just inside the building, but there's, the, the existing septic system is in lousy condition anyway. And so because we're adding plumbing by adding a bathroom, let's, we're just going to do it all now.
I just wanted to know it first.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, last meeting, we went over the whole basic application. So that's why I did skip it today.
Okay.
But that is was mentioned in that because I, I, I went over kind of the snapshot of both, uh, structures and I didn't spoke about that.
Yeah.
But anything else we went over at the last meeting? Okay, you guys are, you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I am.
Mentioned. So, okay, so conclusions of law. Based upon the, upon the application materials, testimonies, statements, evidence, documents and all the material submitted to it and the above findings of fact. The Belgrade Planning Board finds that the cottage is permitted, uh, for an accessory structure use on non-conforming lot under section fourteen, table one in the ordinance. And further makes the following conclusions based on the applicable provisions of section sixteen D of the ordinance. Will maintain safe and healthy conditions. The board found the standard was met based on, uh, P R A S. On, Craig, help me out. What is it again? Is, uh?
Public records and.
Public records?
Submissions.
Record and submissions. Which we're going to, we're going to vote P R A S for now on.
Did you say submission, please?
Submission.
Submissions. Submissions.
That's okay, just one of the two.
I lose my action. So, B R A S from now on. So, based on that, uh, this standard was met uh, for and safe and healthy conditions. We're going to vote. Mrs. Murat?
Was man.
Mr. Sakara? Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And myself, Serlinga is yes. So, uh, four in favor, none oppose. Will not result in water pollution, erosion, sedimentation to surface waters. Board found this standard was met based on P R A S. And we're going to vote. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mr. As, uh, Sakara, yes. Mr. Uh, Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor and none oppose. Will adequately provide for disposal of all wa- wastewater. The board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mr. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor, none opposed. Will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird and other wildlife habitat. The board found this standard was met based on P R A S. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mr. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor, none opposed. Will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual points of access in island waters. The board found this standard was met based on P A R S. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor, none opposed. Will protect archaeological and historical resources as designed in the comprehensive plan. The board found the standard was met based on P R A S. Mrs. Murat? Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor and none opposed. Second page. Will avoid problems associated with floodplain development and use. Based on the board found this standard was met based on P R A S. And we are voting. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mrs. Sakara?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And Ms. Serlinga is four in favor, none opposed. It is in conformance with provisions of section fifteen, land use standards. The board found the standard was met on evidence in the record and further asked. So we're going to read all the items picked with which, the ones that applied and then vote at the end. Okay, minimums, lot standards applies. Principal and accessory structures applies. Campgrounds, NA. Individual private campsites, NA. Commercial and industrial uses, NA. Parking areas, NA. Road and driveway, driveways, NA. Signs, NA. Stormwater runoff applies. Septic waste disposal system applies. Essential services, NA. Mineral exploration and extraction. Mineral exploration and extraction.
Do you have gold over there? God, do we know of.
No, okay, N A. Agriculture, N A. Timber hasber harvesting and land management rules, N A. Clearing or removal of vegetation for activities other than timber harvesting, N A. Hazard trees, foreign damaged trees and dead tree removals, N A. Exceptions to clearing, vegetation, removal requirements, N A. Remediation requirements, N A. Erosion and sedimental sedimentation control. Just applicable?
Well, there's no, that's what I don't know.
Okay, N A. Thank you. Shoreline stabilization. N A. Soils.
You know, it's becoming more sensitive.
Okay, thank you. Water quality. Yes.
The septic is separate, cause that's gonna be done prior to. Kind of a separate function.
Kind of like for a little beverage, which man.
That's an O P I permit? You could just simply say contingent on O P I permit.
Okay. So, historical and agricultural science, N A. Resource protection, N A. Alright, so now we're gonna vote on all of them, all lots. The board found that the standards were met based on the evidence in the record and further as minimum lot size. Principal and source structures, stormwater runoff, septic waste disposal systems. Soils and water quality. Okay, so we're gonna vote. Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
And Miss Sarah Longget is four in favor and none opposed. Alright, conditions of approval needed to meet required Belgrade shoreline zone. Uh ordinance findings in section sixteen D. The first one is always the standard one. Manus stormwater runoff. For new and expanded structures in accordance with sections fifty-nine of the Belgrade shoreline zone. Ordinance and main department of uh environmental protection. Best management practices, are you familiar for those? Right? As outlined in the conservation practice for human, for homeowner. Homeowners provocation. Such measures are to be put in place prior to building units. Know that is standing. Condition that applies to all permits and less deemed on, I would say by applying board based on the following result, so. We are saying that you guys need to do that. Now, there, wasn't there other two or three? Uh, conditions that we add to this form?
Contract, right? But that's.
Yeah, but it's not not happening, it's just a, it's basically a remodel.
Yeah.
Okay, but wasn't there another uh? Or the, we're talking, talking about different, a different application?
Uh.
Do you really?
There's no earthwork, the filling, when it's applicable.
Well.
The one about filling in the crevices of the terrain.
Okay.
But.
We would not this one.
We're not applying.
Okay, great, so with that said. That's the only condition we have? Or we have, we're saying that with no, no kitchen?
Well, they took it out of the. Out of the friends.
Yeah, but we, we. Okay.
So it's proposed of no kitchen, we build with no kitchen.
Okay, and we.
You wanna add a special condition that also says?
That we will make sure that's no kitchen.
Well.
So that, I think, and the reason I said that is because. I guess from what I understand of the history. This previous applicant that got us in trouble. Supposedly was gonna take the kitchen and they never did, so. So I I just wanna make sure that it's in writing. If that's okay, and we we have our peace with each other into it.
I think we should specifically use the language that it uses in the ordinance for dwelling unit. And that is no cooking facilities.
Okay, great.
That's how they define dwelling unit is the combination of three things, cooking facilities, sleeping quarters, and. Sanitary or bathroom or something like that, I forget the language that they actually use, so if you wanna say.
Yeah.
No cooking facilities, I think that makes sense, cause it's, it's exactly what we're saying too.
Mm-hmm. We have two of them. Right. So, that said. Uh, we, 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 we're going to the end of it and we, we need, I need a motion to approve the entire. Uh, uh findings of fact and conclusion of law. So.
I'm so.
Are you okay, you should, so Mrs. Murat placed a motion to uh 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 approve the entire finding of fact and conclusion of law, I need a second.
Isn't it? We, we don't normally approve that, we approve it as a permit, don't we?
Uh, so it says, based on the, on the above finds of fact and conclusion of law, on this day. Uh, it is eleven seventh. Twenty twenty-four. The town of Belgrade planning board approved by a vote.
Of the permit.
Of of this, yeah?
The permit.
Uh, the shoreline permit for application, yes. For the shoreline permission of, uh, it was uh. Was created on.
Ten seven twenty-four.
Twenty-seven, no seventeen, and seventeen twenty-four.
Ten seven, ten seven. No, that's when it, when it was first submitted, I think it's.
Oh, it's wrong.
And eleven seventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh. Uh. From the applicant who is Mister Lawrence Kessler. Right? We're defining with the above conditions at the meeting of one seven, eleven seven, twenty twenty-four. Developed with the written uh final fact, conclusion of law. On the uh Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopted on the findings of fact of uh eleven seven.
War appeal.
Twenty, I'm sorry, yeah. Remanded from the Belgrade Board of Appeals and adopted on the, on the, on these findings. So. I guess uh, this is what it says here, I think what it means is that it doesn't go to the war of bills. And adopt it with the findings that are down here. Right? So we have to have a lawyer in the, in the room, you know, this question's coming out, you know, so. So are we, are we voting then on the permit, great, so uh uh I have a motion and I have a second?
Okay.
Alright, so uh Mrs. Murat?
Yes.
Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
And Miss Sarah, Sarah Longget is four in favor, none opposed. And Mister Kessler, you got a permit.
Great, thank you all very much.
My pleasure, thank you for your, for your patience.
It's uh, it's been an interesting journey here, but thank you, yes, I learned a lot about main zoning law.
Whether he wanted to or.
So I didn't wait.
Yeah.
So, true. Thank you.
Yeah.
Nice to see you all.
All right, Lawrence, I will, you know, your coffee's at least tomorrow.
Thank you.
So you'll have time copies.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow and we can go over the administrative details, if that's okay. Okay. Thank you, Mister Rosman.
Oh, Paul.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. Nicely done. Thank you, well, you have the patience and job to get through all of this, my goodness, even. Um, and all the journey, what you've been through with that whole Jennifer Jones case, my god, gosh, a lot.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Sure, yeah.
And your participation.
Happy to, happy to do it, I used to, there's, there's a, when you're a lawyer, you have to do continuing legal education every year and get a certain number of credits. And there's one they do every year that's called Legal Year Review, there's a whole bunch of different subjects that we'll sort of plow through in a day, and I used to do the municipal law one. And it finally got to be that I just needed to focus more on my practice and I handed it off to Phil, so it was nice to see him, I haven't seen him. Good.
So, Simone, the locker really made is.
So, especially people that do municipal work.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a pretty small group, yeah.
Get some credits for continuing an education in time.
I wish, if only, right, if only, anyway, lovely to see you, good to meet you all, thanks so much. Mary, your full name is Mary Dennison, what is number one, Dennison, you need to put it in the record.
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it, we got it.
Again, you invite your way out?
Okay, thanks so much.
Good night.
Damn, that one died.
It worked out great, I, I, I really, I don't know the rest of you, but I feel very reassured.
Yeah.
With the dialogue and felt and it's. It's, it's uh, it's like, we're still kind of looking in the twilight, but. We have a better path into it. Alright, so, this is done. We have a. Do we have a? What's our people head tonight?
No, they didn't come.
Hmm.
They're your friends, I thought you.
My understanding Sunday was I'll see you Thursday. He called, he said, be, I said, I'll be there.
So, um.
I wonder if I should call him, you want me to call him?
Nope, I'm not waiting.
Yeah, it's a school week, it's a school day, uh, and then. Uh, Mister uh, uh, Bossy? Uh.
Bessie.
Messi, Bessie. Mister Bessie, Mister Bessie, yes.
Bessie. Just give Bessie a, a, a complete blank.
Yeah, very um busy guy. Alright, so, so we move through new business A, we're gonna do B, old business, I'm gonna leave all that for next meeting.
Well, next meeting, we've got a lot of stuff already.
Alright, but I.
Should we, should we put Lexite on to get the can down to the next meeting, or should we just ignore it?
What we have for the next meeting?
Well, now we've gonna discuss this stiff decision.
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna push tonight's conversation on to that?
Yeah.
And you've got two applications already. One is a commercial.
Yeah.
And one is a shoreline zone.
Okay, so then, then we'll move the, the subdivision checklist to the following meeting then. We're gonna, we'll have to move all that.
Well.
I know, I know.
Subdivision checklist we need, okay.
Do, do we have an application related to that coming up?
Yeah. Next meeting.
Alright, I, I'm not, not up um up to speed with that at all. Um. So we, we either keep, we, we can work it out next meeting. Or we're gonna have to work to the next one. Uh, money per lot revision, accessory building applications. Uh, when more accessory building applications?
Yes, there's one coming in December, but anyway, that's irrelevant.
Okay.
Because we've got a lot of patients that are coming or coming, so the dollars for a lot of revision, um. Like that, we'll just kick that down the road with the subdivision checklist, cause that's one of the criteria that needs to be discussed as.
Okay.
On a revision.
Can you, you think even, even when we need a longer meeting, can we put that in the next meeting, all that?
Sure.
Right, and, and we don't have minutes, we.
I don't have minutes.
To work, so uh, I guess then, do you have any questions from the CEO, comments from the CEO?
Yeah. Um. All right, next meeting. Also, there's a. Presentation from the Belgrade Lakes Association, that shoreline zone review committee.
Hmm.
Wants to present. Their.
Findings, yeah.
What they've come up with, and this is a copy of it, so you can have it, moving into re-group.
We're gonna fit all this stuff in the next meeting.
Exactly. And your applications. It's probably. Uh, discussion about.
Well, their next meeting is them presenting this, it doesn't mean you gotta go through it.
Okay.
But I want you to have in hand.
Sure.
So you can review it prior to.
So, so they probably most likely will be at the beginning of the meeting. And, and so, do, do we tell them how long they're gonna have to present? Like ten fifteen minutes and that's it?
Your chair.
So, so I did receive an e- email today, I think when, I don't know, I really do yesterday. So I will email him and tell him that uh he has um. Oh my god, that's a lot to listen to.
Well, they, they're wanting to present this to you.
Yeah.
It's not. Um.
Uh, I'll, I'll give them uh uh fifty minutes.
That's your, that's all.
I'll, I'll give them uh fifty minutes.
Yeah, just Craig said forty-five minutes for a discussion on stiff, so that's an hour and then two applications.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll give them fifty minutes and then what's gonna happen is they present and we're done. Well, we're not gonna make any decision or anything like that that day.
But.
Uh.
I'm sorry, not Craig, George, George said forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes. So then, then forty-five minutes of the stiff. I, I actually, you know, the stiff, I feel so good about it.
I don't think we need forty-five minutes.
I don't think we need that, maybe if that happened, if that happened, I will.
Yeah.
Maybe he will stand it to forty-five minutes. There will be questions, because he was not present tonight. But I would say thirty minutes for this, for the stiff thing. And then we'll move there with the applications.
So, I, I think what they might have in mind, I've been attempting, is just to, to run through this. Or read through it, what you.
No, we don't read into it, they, we're gonna, I wanna, I wanna, in one minute, they go through change one, one minute. Change two, one minute. There's so, change three, there are a hundred changes, there are about fifty changes.
And their logic behind it, so.
Quickly, with pitch, pitch line and the solution. I don't wanna go read through all this in the minute, no.
Well, we can't make the decision all in one night, but they wanna present it, they wanna give us the whys, how they got to it.
So that's why we have it ahead, we can read it, and when they come in, if change one, they presented in one minute. And we have questions, we have thirty minutes, thirty seconds questions. And I'm timing, honestly, I'm gonna be going in with the timer.
That's your point, if that doesn't work for them on the next meeting, then they can request, you push them around. But I don't know how long that.
Well. I think, again, they're presenting these suggested changes.
Yep.
They may wanna discuss some. It is not expected that this board is gonna come up with conclusions and. All in one night.
We're gonna be doing that in December.
This is gonna be a time consuming where we, you break it up and you address this, 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 and you might wanna read through it and say. Well, this is an easy one, and this one, well, it's gonna take more thought, or this one outlandish, so you can qualify. And address them at your pace or at this committee's pace in the future.
Yes, alright. Oh, um, correct.
Um, in a nutshell, are you on board with this, or?
That's not relevant to your committee's decision.
Well, you are on the committee, so I wondered.
I'm not on the committee.
Oh, it says hands, moves.
I was present.
Oh, just present.
They called me an ad hoc member, but I was basically keeping them between the lines of what's in or what's not.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is this is legal?
They didn't write ordinance here, that's.
No, they just make this.
Yes, make this again.
This is all up to us, and there's gonna be a lot of, that's not gonna be. Uh, applicable.
Applicable, okay.
And some of them are just taking what's already in the ordinance, maybe a step further.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there's. You know, not gonna say it's all good, I'm not gonna say it's all bad. But a lot of thought and research went into these ideas.
Hmm.
And it's up to you to apply them as ordinance or say where they might be better applied.
Yeah. So, any other items from the CEO?
Um. No.
Alright, any other discussions? So I'll entertain an emotion to adjourn.
I'm making motion of adjourn.
And need a second, second, alright, so, um. Mrs. Uh, what I brought out is.
Yes.
Mister Sakara?
Yes.
Mister Alexander?
Yes.
And Miss Sarah Longget saying yes, so we adjourn the board. And Ms. Serlinga said yes, so we adjourn the board.